All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before the start of this meeting, the board met in executive session with our attorney to discuss the end of litigation regarding the pump station and a member of the sewer study area. Do you want to take over here?
Yes, the board has been involved in litigation before the zoning hearing board related to some variances associated with placement of the pump station on Lower State Road to accommodate the sewer project that has been planned for some years. The resolution is such that the township will agree that the adjoining neighbor will need not participate in the cost of the overall facilities because he will be right available right where the pump station is. Number two, that he won't be responsible for paying a tap-in fee, and the township will pay the cost of him to connect to the public sewer. And also, the township will continue to provide the landscaping that was part of the original application. That's the essence of the agreement, and the neighbor will not be objecting to the granted variance so the project can get moving. I appreciate the board would, if you're so inclined, to approve the settlement, authorize the chair to sign the settlement agreement.
I authorize Barbara to sign the agreement on our behalf.
Second.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Any questions out there concerning the issue? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Any, we're going to remove Sergeant Rose's retirement from the agenda. If that's not happening, it'll happen next meeting. Any visitors or public comment tonight? Please, would you take a microphone? Identify yourself with your name and address.
Hi. My name is Sheila Lazlo.
Sheila, I think you're going to have to do that a little louder and closer to the microphone.
My name is Sheila Lazlo. How does this work?
What do you want to talk about? What's your address?
It's okay, he got it.
We live on Quail Drive. We have a neighbor who has ATVs and they have modified exhaust, and we are under the impression that there's an ordinance in place for that.
Have you called here to the township building?
We've called the police many, 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 many times over the years.
Okay.
So, we're finally going to try this.
Okay. What is your address on Quail Drive?
Twenty-one.
Okay. And it's your immediate neighbor?
They're across the creek on Bristol.
In?
Doylestown Township.
What's the issue? I'm sorry.
So, there's supposed to be an ordinance in place.
For ATVs.
It's confusing how it's written. I'm sorry, I just got out of work and might have.
I think it's a, you have to have a certain size property and you can't operate the ATV.
Well, they're supposed to be, it's confusing on how it's written. There's supposed to be a 55 decibel meter reading at the property line, but I think there's some confusion on how it's written because it looks like the decibel limit is not in place when there is deconstruction or construction going on.
Correct.
Okay, so there is.
You're referring to the noise ordinance sections of our general code versus what may also be a police matter in riding on property or not on private property and things like that. And then we have a separate one that we did a few years ago with the ATVs, so.
So, I see head shaking.
Well, it's, I am confused as well, so I think we'll get together with a member of our police department, maybe the chief, and your complaints, and someone from code enforcement, and look into it, okay?
Well, can I read it?
Sure.
Hold on, I just have to find it. My husband's in the wrong place. I don't know where he is, but he's trying to call me, so that's what that was, and I apologize. The ordinance, let me just find the P D.
There's more than one.
There are two.
There'd be three that are relevant.
There's three that are.
I don't mean to interrupt it, but while you're trying to find that.
No, go ahead.
I'll try to explain, so we are aware of the complaints of the property owners, and we have two things of getting a reading of decibels on the property line and getting a reading of the decibels, like, don't quote me on the distance, but 12 inches from the tailpipe of the ATV.
Ninety-nine. Ninety-nine decibels.
Correct. And we have been monitoring, but we have been following what the ordinance states, and there is no violation that we can cite anybody on. We understand the frustration of the homeowner with sitting outside on such a nice day and all you're hearing is ATVs running back and forth, but there's only certain amount of things that we can do the way the ordinance is written today.
So, you're thinking that, so it says, where is it? Where is it? I'm, oh, sorry, my, that just messed me up. Sorry.
I assume he's staying on his own property and that's.
They've trespassed.
Oh, and that's different if they.
Right. And the thing is, we have to have evidence of them trespassing. If she sees them on their property, on her property, we can cite them and then bring her as a witness to testify.
Or take a picture of him.
If they have a picture of it, then that would be additional evidence that they were trespassing on her property.
Okay, that's a big help.
It says, "At no point shall the sound intensity produced by an ATV dirt bike or snowmobile exceed 99 decibels when measured 20 inches." And we called, I think, two weeks ago, and somebody was able to take a meter reading from the street, and they were able to get 89. So, if you got to the tailpipe, it's got to be over.
No, what we did, I remember that call, and the officer actually did go up to the ATV owners.
Yes.
And had him start the motor and actually held the decibel readers from there and documented the level. Again, I can't quote you the exact decibel reader from the, from the back of the tailpipe.
Okay.
But if it was in violation, we would have cited without any problem, but.
And the other part is that it reads, "At no point at, on the boundary of a residential, industrial, or commercial district shall sound pressure level of any operation exceed the decibel levels shown below for the district indicate. These standards do not apply to the operation of motor vehicles or other transportation facilities, operations involved in the construction or demolition of structures or emergency alarm signals." So, I think that's where the confusion is because it does state motor vehicles, but it seems that it's in conjunction with construction. And is that true?
I would say, that would be my interpretation.
Right.
In other words, if you had a bulldozer or something else.
Exactly.
Or a crane or something.
That should not apply to this situation.
Should not apply to this situation.
So, in that case, does a 55 decibel meter read, hold?
I would say, in my opinion, it does.
Yes.
At the property line.
So, then if you're getting them at 89 decibels, they're clearly over violation.
Yes.
And the other issue that we're having is that the meter is not always available. It's locked away somewhere, that it's not accessible to the police force, and many times this issue is occurring on weekends or after business hours. So, we're sort of stuck in a catch-22 where we're trying to make these calls and we're trying to get something done, but nothing can be done and nobody's helping us.
Is there a time that's always you can count on now?
They're random because they're kids.
Well, it looks like they got them, tracked them at 89, if that's the way the variance reads, right?
Correct. The times that we did have it, I do recall the report that the officer did not have any in his vehicle at the time.
Right.
Months ago, I was able to obtain the decibel reader from the code enforcement officer. I placed it back into the squad room and directed the squads to make sure that they had it available and they were familiar with the ordinance.
Okay.
To follow it, so.
There's still confusion. And somebody, the last person we had out wasn't, didn't know that the meter was in the squad room.
Correct. Correct. I addressed that with the sergeant of that squad, and he had to explain why his officers did not have it out in the car and was not aware of the complaint that we had. That has been corrected. There's been a direct order to all the patrols in all the zone, especially in your zone of Doylestown Township, that the officer has it in his vehicle at all times.
So, I'm hoping that what Lieutenant just recited there will get more attention to the problem.
Okay.
Problem will be rectified.
It wouldn't be so bad if they didn't have the modified exhaust, but it's crazy. My husband was, this is my husband. I'm sorry.
One person talks at a time.
He was mowing on this Sunday, and they started their one ATV up all across the creek, and my husband was mowing around the house. I'm inside the house. I believe the windows were open because it was nice, and I could hear it over the tractor. It's just, it's obscene.
What do you mean by modified exhaust? What does that mean?
Can I have my husband speak to that?
Yes. Come up and identify yourself at the microphone. At the microphone. Sorry. We're being recorded live.
Okay. I have a video of it if you would like to see what we're talking about as far as how loud it is.
Well, why not?
Well, why not? Okay. Perfect.
Show it to us.
I mean, we could do it in stereo sound right here if you want.
Yeah, do it.
If we have complaints from our residents saying there's this issue, and can we go over and say, "I want you to start up your ATV and I want to measure it?"
But you know what? I'm thinking, when you just start up an ATV and you have your motor running and exhaust on, it's going to sound a lot less loud than when you're actually operating.
Roving it.
Yeah, revving it. So, I think if you're just taking a measure from the startup, it's not going to register appropriately because, as you're operating it. You know?
Good point.
But I also think, let's not neglect the fact that Mr. Garten clarified the ordinance, and it is 55, and so we've already tracked them at 89, so they're in violation of the ordinance.
Correct. And if I'm, if I'm correct, it's at the border of the property is the 55 decibels. We never had them at the border of the property. We had them at the, in his driveway and doing the decibel reading there. So, for us to prosecute and have a conviction of this ordinance, the judge's first question would be saying, "Well, at the property line, what was the decibel reading?"
Well, we might be able to accomplish that now that we know that your folks have the reading and they're 24/7, so.
Okay, I have it, but now that I'm starting to think about it, I was kind of angry at the time, and I don't know if I want to play this. I'm serious.
Are you annotating it as it goes?
Because it goes out to the public on TV, so.
I don't think I want to do that now. This had probably been maybe the five or six time that we've called, and it was just like, and it was probably the first time that I was video taping or the second time. And then I started to think about actually if I should play that for some reason.
Now, is it about five or six calls over what time period? A month, two months, three months?
Pretty much ever since they moved there, so how long has it been? I know.
A year, more than a year?
I think it's been a year, if not better.
Okay.
I'm aware of several complaints. I can't give you the exact number, and we tried to mediate between the two neighbors and use reasonableness, as everybody would be able to define it, to consider the other person's part, other person's position. The owners of the ATV are well-versed in what the ordinance says and state that they're, they're complying with the ordinance. So, we will do our due diligence anytime a call is made that we'll go out there as soon as possible. We'll make sure that the decibel reader is in that zone car, and we'll get the information firsthand rather than having an own cellphone or having it on the driveway rather than the property line so we can. We're not shy about citing violators of township ordinance. Our officers are very aggressive, and they understand the problem. They understand your point of view, and they're not trying to push this off saying, "Oh, it's only ATVs, we'll just leave them alone." They're, they're aggressive in citing violators. They're not just pushing us off.
We created the ordinance for a reason.
I'm sorry.
We created the ordinance for a reason, and if I recall, we got some flack for it.
We did.
And I think I was named personally.
You were flacked, yes.
Yeah, in letters to the editor for creating this ordinance. So, we take it seriously, and I'm sorry that you haven't had the opportunity to have the benefit of it, but I think going forward, you will.
Okay, I really appreciate it. Have you had any other complaints from my neighbors? Because it just seems like every, I told them, I was like, "Can you guys hear?" And they can hear all the way to the front.
Yeah, I can't, I can't say that we've had additional complaints other than your home, but I can't say that we haven't. I just remember numerous complaints that I went through and advising the squads to get the decibel reader out there and to enforce the ordinance as it's written.
Okay.
So, we'll clarify the decibel readings, where we have to get the readings, to where we have to be able to cite this person for the violation, make sure that everybody's well-versed on it. And again, if there's any violation, we will not hesitate to cite the person.
Okay. And also, when you, when you actually do that, how close, what is it, 50 feet or something that you'll be? Like, you, I'm giving you permission to go on the property and go to where you need to go to. Like, I don't want you to have to sit in the driveway and do it. I'm telling you, this is like, it's going to be so loud.
Right. Now, I don't understand your property line versus the creek versus his property line, but I believe it's 50 feet on your property line is where we can take the decibel reading.
Okay.
Okay? So, we can't stand on their property to take it.
No, I understand.
Other than doing the 20 inches, again, I'm not accurate with the numbers, but the 20 inches behind the tailpipe to get that reading. So, as I said, we'll enforce the ordinance as much as we can.
Okay. I just, we don't mean to be calling you guys all the time like this, but this is just so far.
It's pervasive.
Right.
It's, it's just over the top.
I do feel for you because, again, it's, the weather's starting to get nice, and you have a nice property with the creek in the backyard, and you're sitting out there, you know, having lunch, and all you're hearing is the ATVs running up and down.
It literally makes you angry. I mean, I don't know how to explain it, but it's so.
Well, that's because, because sound will penetrate your eardrums and will create tension within your body. It's a natural reaction to an unpleasant sound. So, the anger is a byproduct of that unpleasantness.
I've literally called all my neighbors to say, "Listen, that's not me making that kind of noise," because, you know, they thought maybe it was the tractors or something, you know.
All right, Mr. Lazlo, Mrs. Lazlo wants to say one more thing before you guys finish.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
I was wondering if there was any way to modify the ordinance so that the racetrack effect is not. I don't know if that's fair, though. Like, they literally will have four items out, and they've created this raceway, and they go on for hours and hours, and they're on the throttle, off the throttle, on the throttle, off the throttle.
If they're tearing up the dirt, somebody ought to contact the conservation district.
It is in a wooded area, and I don't know if there's an act in place on that.
And I don't know if they're actually going down into the creek bed area. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think they are riding on their property and they made a track out of it.
They are, but I'm not sure that there's another part of the ordinance that states that they can't have that within certain amount from the boundary, and I don't know how far in they are with their track.
Right.
And I don't know how to go about getting something like that measured officially because I'm not about to step foot on their.
It's a code violation. It would not be a police.
As I said, it may be that we need to get the police and the code and all of this together on that.
Because I'm afraid that once we do this, we're going to get a lot of fallout from it.
When we enter their property. Yes, you, you will as a neighbor, and you might get some.
And it's probably going to be worse for a while, or some, I don't know. I don't know what the ramifications will be.
Well, I'm not sure what, if it's this Saturday and they rev up, what do you want her to do?
Call us right away. You don't necessarily have to go out to the property, try to sue them away.
We don't.
Let them ride their bikes the way they want to. You call us out, we'll go out and take the meter reading at the appropriate distance.
Okay.
All right. And like I said, I'll refresh myself as the actual written and meaning of the ordinance, make sure our officers are aware of that.
Okay.
So, they're taking the proper reading at the proper distance.
And you're saying that since this last officer came out and was not aware that the decibel meter was in the squad room, that has been rectified?
I can guarantee you, the sergeant has addressed it. If this has become another problem, I'll be addressing it with the sergeant.
And everybody seems to be clear on the force as to what the decibel.
Yes.
Reading should be?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm seeing none, hearing none. All right. We're next meeting on Tuesday, June 6th at 4:00 p.m. The Bicentennial Committee is meeting on June 6th at 3:00 p.m. We're closed on Tuesday, May 16th for Primary Election Day, and we're also closed on Monday, May 29th for Memorial Day. The 2018 Budget Work Session is proceeding on June 20th at 4:00 p.m. Please, you're welcome to attend. Touch a Truck is this Saturday, May 6th at Central Park, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a free event. The Home Run Derby is Thursday, May 18th at the Turk Baseball Field. You have to check in at 4:30. You start at 5:00 o'clock and ends at 7:00. It's free, but you have to pre-register. Go to DoylestownRec.com. The Thompson Performing Arts Series begins Friday, May 19th with the movie Moana. Before the movie starts at 7:30, there is a free Polynesian dance demonstration. Moana, the movie itself, will start at sunset. The next movie, the following event, is June 2nd. It's The Secret Life of Pets. It's a fun movie if you haven't seen it, and the mission is free and is sponsored by the Doylestown Animal Medical Clinic. Doylestown Township will be holding an e-cycling event through P A R Recycle Works on Saturday, June 3rd from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's for Doylestown Township residents only. The event will be held at this building, the administration building. Doylestown Township Annual Golf Outing, there are flyers over there. Please sign up. The event is, the outing is scheduled for Monday, May 5th at the Doylestown Country Club. Monday, June 5th, thank you very much. Doylestown Country Club. Deadline for registration is May 15th, or you can contact DoylestownRec.com or me as chairman of the golf outing. And like I said, we're signing up golfers now and sponsors for the golf outing. All benefits for the golf outing this year will go to the Kids Castle. Okay. Environmental Advisory Council and the dog park are each selling magnets. They're $5.00 each, and you get them at the front desk. Next item on the agenda is the minutes approval for the Board of Supervisors for April 18th to 2017. Is there a motion to approve the, the regular meeting of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is the. Extension, thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes from the Budget Work Session from April 18th to 2017. Is there a motion to approve those notes?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No correspondence. We'll move on to reports from the solicitors.
I have nothing we will not discuss perhaps later on in the agenda.
Lieutenant?
I just have a few things. We have two officers currently attending the police bicycle training, training course up in eastern Pennsylvania. They'll be graduating or completing training on Friday, so with the nice weather and the park systems all opened up, you'll be seeing many more sightings of the police bike. The two officers are Jared Quartz and Officer Stephen McCosh, so they're in good shape, so they'll be making many miles on the, on the trail, so. Next is Friday, we're going to be sending two officers to the funeral for Corporal Bullard from Delaware State Police. One of those vehicles will be our new police motorcycle. And on Saturday, the Touch a Truck, Officer Jessica Whiteside will be attending the Touch a Truck on her motorcycle, motorcycle, or motorcycle, excuse me. So, she'll be there to speak with any, any young people that would like to look at the bike.
So, Lieutenant, we've had three officers qualify for the motorcycle?
We have three officers, Officer Timothy Reel, Officer Scott Jones, and Officer Jessica Whiteside. They're on three different squads, so we'll get the bike and the motorcycle out there as much as possible.
Well, maybe they should visit your property, huh? See which is noise here. Thank you, Lieutenant. All right. Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Tomko?
We have a recommendation from a date of April 27th for Geo-Technical Engineering Services to be awarded to Underwood's Engineering Testing Company Incorporated. Mario and Pickering Quartz Somerson asked us, we asked them to paint quotes. They did so at Mario's recommendation. I recommend that we award that an amount of $8,330.
You guys have familiarity with this group?
Yes.
Okay. You like them?
Yes, I mean, we've worked with all three firms.
Okay, excellent. Is there a motion to approve Underwood Engineering Testing Company for this Geo-Technical.
So moved.
Service? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Something else, Mr. Tomko?
Phillips and Donovan submitted a request for an increase in architectural and engineering services for the building renovations in the amount of $11,240. Additional work is not for any of their architectural services. The change is for the structural engineering services in the amount of $8,340. Mechanical electrical plumbing in the amount of $6,500, and a decrease in the cost estimating of $3,600, again totaling $11,240.
And they're picking up these two services that we would otherwise have to have built out for other providers, or is this something that was missed?
No, no, this was just due to the change from renovation to.
Oh, to the.
Remod, tear down, reconstruction.
Okay.
That's, there was additional work there.
Once we made that change to tear down.
It's our first change order?
Yeah.
No more? That's it? No more? All right. Is there a motion to approve the additions to Joseph Phillips?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Phillips Architect, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Finally, Mr. Tomko, you have one more?
Yes, the 2017 road bid award recommendation. On April 20th, four bids were received and opened via the Penn Bid website. Those construction documents and bid documents were prepared by Pickering Quartz and Somerson based on Mario's recommendation. We are requesting the board approve a total of, be awarded to James E. Morrissey Incorporated Philadelphia, PA in the amount of $579,767.20.
Are they in Philadelphia?
They are headquartered in Philadelphia.
Are they?
Correct. Even though there's, they've got sites throughout the area, including down in Eureka and off of Pickerton Road. That includes a base bid of $524,982.20, an add alternate bid for $6,890. Now, that alternate A is for the paving of Hart Avenue in Doylestown Hunt from the Township Line, the Township Borough Line to Main Street. And the Borough has submitted documentation, email from John Davis, the Borough Manager. They will reimburse the township in the amount of $6,890 for that work. So, they will pay us, will reimburse us for that work. Add alternate B is for $47,895, and that includes a paving of three roads in the greens off of Alms House Road. Again, totaling, all the, all three total $579,767.20.
Thank you. Well done. Is there a motion to approve James D. Morrissey for the total bid of $579,767.20 for the road program?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad Morrissey got the work, I mean, they have been so helpful to the township in giving away services and volunteering and, they have.
They're doing the trail, I think, on Lower State.
Yeah, and they helped us build those two new athletic fields, um, off New Britton Road at the other side of, of, of Central Park, so I'm glad they got it. Bear and Square, all right, you got one more?
Yes, um, this is for the purchase of a rotary, uh, and I'll just give, read it out, SL 120 Trio TA lift for the fleet maintenance building. Dan Markloff received three quotes, um, for lifts from three companies, Harples Auto and Truck Lifts, uh, from Germansville PA was the low bidder at $10,020. That includes the purchase and installation for that lift in the new building.
Excellent. All right, is there a motion to approve Harples Auto and Truck Lifts for the rotary SL 210 Trio TA truck lift to be installed in our new building?
Move to approve, seconded.
Uh, Dave, is, what are we gonna do with the one we have now?
I'm not sure at this point, I don't know if it's gonna be scrapped-
I could use it, if you-
I don't know if it's gonna be scrapped or if it will go to auction.
Make me an offer, I mean, I can-
You're not allowed, there are rules.
No, I would think it's still, um, it's a word, worth something.
Usable?
Viable, yeah, good.
All right, um, if there's a motion, a second, and aside from Mr. Colwell's comments, we'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving along here, manager.
Nothing we won't discuss there.
Supervisors, we'll begin with Mr. Toville.
Um, I have just a couple of models for EAC events, um, we celebrated Arbor Day with the tree planting, uh, here in the park, along with some help from the fifth graders of Coots Elementary, so thank you to everybody involved and thank you to Coots and all kids, uh, as well as, uh, this Saturday, April 29th, our native plant brigade, which is near the EAC, and volunteers, weeded, uh, did some maintenance, installed a couple new winter berries and lugged a lot of rock, uh, and also a big thank you to a lot of the new volunteers that came out, some new faces, which is always helpful. Our next, uh, next day is May 27th and, uh, again, many hands make light work, so we appreciate everybody's help, so.
Thank you.
Get another chance every month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ryan, you have anything?
Uh, just a couple of quick things, number one, I wanna put another plug out for our golf event on June 5th with proceeds going to Kids Castle. The other thing is just, um, I drove home today from Annapolis and I stopped in Middletown, Delaware, at a Wawa there, and, um, Wawa was taking donations for the family of Sergeant Bullard and, and you, you mentioned that we have a couple officers going, uh, and, you know, it really, I think it's always good for us to kind of have that reminder, you know, this small, bare Delaware town in Delaware had a Wawa, um, an officer is gunned down and killed, so I think it's important for us all to understand that those things can happen and they can happen quickly and they can happen in small towns like ours, so, um, make sure that when you're out there, uh, I've seen a lot of our officers out recently and, um, and they don't all know me, uh, but I make sure I go up and I thank them for their service and everything they're doing and, you know, I'm just kinda giving a shout out to our police force and all the work you do and, and to keep it up.
Geez, that's really nice, I'm usually trying to avoid them because they're cheap. How about you, Rick, you have anything?
I just happen to have a couple of things, uh, I have a long list, actually. Uh, since the last meeting, uh, our planning commission, our planning commission met, the hospital was in, you'll see later on, they're gonna ask for an extension or, uh, um, they, their traffic study was not done, plus, when somebody internal, um, traffic needs to be reworked, they're putting in a new entrance, an additional entrance into the parking lot in an effort to get more people to use the parking lot, and that's a good thing, but they gotta think through a little bit more of the, um, the flow because-
You mean the parking garage?
Yes.
Parking lot?
I'm sorry, parking garage, yes.
Parking garage.
Thank you, a new entrance into the parking garage, um, but they've gotta look a little bit more about the flow because now they got cars going this way, that way, and ambulance and et cetera, et cetera. So that and the traffic study and a few other areas, so they are asking for an extension, you'll see that later on, um, in the agenda. We also had a resident, uh, going to develop his land, uh, New Britton Road, just off of Lower State, going to be eight new homes, um, so if you're going down Lower State, make a right on the New Britton, it's right on your left. We also had, um, applicant Mr. Callen come in, that's the property behind Tabor Homes, so we got a lot going on in that area, Tabor Homes, um, budding Weldon Road, so he is, um, wishing to add two new homes into his property, and that was well attended by the residence. Um, we all went to P Sats, so, just so you know that I-
All go to P Sats, didn't we?
No.
Did you go?
No.
Okay.
Well, anyway, I, I, then I'll share my knowledge of what I learned so that you'll feel better that, you know, that you didn't have to attend, you at least got, got the benefit of it.
Well, we did go to P Sats, there was just one who didn't, that's all.
Well, you didn't go to classes I went to, though, I don't think.
What classes did you go to, Rick? Yeah, Rick, tell us.
The only thing I wanna, the only thing I really wanna mention is part of it was in our magazine, the P Sats magazine, was the road, um, maintenance and repairs.
Right.
Extreme, I mean, it was excellent articles, 20 pages long, if you haven't read it, take, take some time and read it, it's amazing of how complex this is, and they reemphasize in several points about, yeah, the first thing you'd have to do is inventory the roads, and Ken and I, and Dave spoke about this out at P Sats, I mean, that's the first critical, uh, is the inventory of the roads, assess the condition of the roads, and then select what treatment to use on each road, because you don't use the same treatment on the different roads, uh, different, uh, uh, usage, wear and tear, et cetera, so that's gonna take some time to do, but I'm sure Dave's up to it, and it was very interesting and I, they, they strongly, um, mentioned that you're, you also wanna, your, your real priority is to maintain the roads that are in good condition, because if you let them go year after year, they become worse and they become, and all you're doing is the bad roads every year, so that emphasis was, and I think Mario and I had this conversation a couple years ago about bridges, you always wanna make sure your, your, your good bridges are kept up, otherwise you're just chasing your tail, so that, that was a, a real good point, and I'm sure Dave is, is, is aware of it, and I just thought I'd let the rest of the board in on some of the knowledge that I gained.
Well, too bad you had to go to P Sats to learn all that, because we've been doing it for the last 15 years anyway.
Well, I'm not so sure about that.
Just saying.
I'm not so sure about that.
I mean, road trips I've been on where we would be shown, I mean, first it started with old Danny, we've shown this road needs this because of this, and then we were gonna put it in this budget, and then Dick John took over for that, so we've been doing that, perhaps not with a little computer screen-
We don't, yeah, exactly, we don't know-
And program, but we've been doing it.
We don't know, other than in Dick's head, maybe, what the condition of all 79 miles of road are and which ones are-
But I was paying attention.
Yeah. I won't.
Just kidding.
No, no, I, I won't comment.
All right, are you finished?
You mean on this stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm finished on this stuff.
Ken?
Just to build on to what Rick was saying, uh, and to, uh, let him know that Dave has already scheduled some of those vendors to come in and talk to us.
Excellent.
Um, and just to highlight, one of your, your main point is, uh, and the one session Dave and I had gone to was called Payment Management System, and that might be where they got the article for, in that book, but, so yeah, there's our, there is a lot of good things, uh, but, and there's been a lot of good work done already, when you look at the inventory, they, we have an inventory of the roads, it may not be 100% accurate, but we have an Excel spreadsheet, has everything in it, has the wits, has everything, so what we're talking about is not just roads, we're talking about asset management and making sure we, we have a plan on what we're going to do. However, with all the other things we're doing within the township, that may, we can't, I don't know, well, it's up to Dave how aggressive he can be with that because we're doing so many other things, so, but we need to start, and, uh, it has started, and, uh, I think he, we have a good, we'll put a good plan together and come back to, to the board for that. Um, the other comment I had is wanted to make sure that the people attending here and anybody watching that two of the bids that they talked about were tied to the renovations project. Um, you know, one is for the parking rec building to do the, the Geo-Technical Study, and the other one is the movement of the fleet maintenance down to the cul-de-sac, so.
Did you mean renovations project?
What did I say?
Renovations project?
Yeah.
New building project?
Yeah.
Okay. We're building, uh, we're building new, you call it, as renovations project. We just spent like four hours on this today. I, what I was gonna, what I was gonna follow up, um-
Did someone have too much coffee today?
This morning, we spent on, um, some time videoing on the new building project, and , um, it, it includes renovations, rehabbing, uh, repurposing and building anew, so, so I just wanna make sure we are all on the same page here.
There you go, Ken.
On the same camera.
Yes.
Are, are you done?
I'll be done.
Okay, I'm done too. All right, moving on, thank you, Ken. Moving on, new business, Pavilion Rental Fee.
Um, the Parks Recreation Chair, uh, Director is recommending that we amend the fee schedule in order to assist the public with our online Pavilion Rental application, this is taking steps to streamline the fee schedule, um, and the changes so that we can have a little bit more of a one-size, cost-fits-all, um, in the three-hour time blocks that the rentals occur, and you see the various, um, areas in the fee schedule that Karen is recommending, um, making those changes.
Thoughts?
Thoughts?
Yeah. Any thoughts on this?
I just had two, well, I had two questions around this, as one was, um, and it's just that I don't know, and I'm not asking for it right here, but I'd like to understand is how often is it rented, what, what is the use of it? And how do the rates-
At the pavilions? Constantly. I mean, they start with April-
I don't know what that means, is that every day, every weekend, or-
Every, throughout the days and the weekends, very, very popular for the rentals of our pavilions, um, in the parks, Kids Castle birthday parties, family reunions and the like, they're, um, consistently-
We should communicate that somehow.
Rental, they're-
Make people, yeah, then how do our rates compare to other facilities, or is this pretty much in line?
I think we're, we're in line and competitive, Karen usually checks on that, but again, trying to, um, do more online, that's what people are asking for, and so making a little bit easier in terms of the numbers and the fees and everything like that, so we're being consistent there.
All right, anybody else? Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the change in the fee schedule?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, Doylestown Hospital has requested, um, an extension through to June 20th, 2017, that would be our next meeting, yes?
Um, yeah, actually, it's after we get a next meeting.
Um, is there a motion to approve the extension?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have some zoning hearing applications, um, geez, they involve our buildings. Yes, they do.
So we have, um, two zoning applications, one requests a variant, well, they're both variance requests.
Yes.
Um, consensus is sent to the zoning hearing board without the solicitor?
Oh, no, with the solicitor.
With the solicitor?
I would say the board authorized filing the applications.
And, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's because we're the applicant.
Yes, you're the applicant.
We have to-
Stephanie and I have no authority to do that.
All right, uh, is there a motion from the board to, uh, send, uh, to make these applications to the zoning hearing board?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We'll make them, for both on the same-
For both of them. Yep.
And you agree with that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you go then.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Representing us, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. All right, got it. All right, is that it? That's it?
Smith, you can hit two.
Oh, I have one more announcement that's on, that's on the page here, um, people here. Due to construction at Pine Run, the location for Polling Place 2 for Doylestown Township has been moved to the Central Bucks Community Center at 700 Shady Retreat Road. Everyone got that? Pine Run's closed for the May primary, so you have to go to, um, the senior center, 700 Shady Retreat, so please advise your voting districts, if you're whoever's in that voting district.
And there's, and there's two other polls there, so make it clear.
Yes, so there'll be three.
Five, six, and-
Two, five, and six, yeah.
I don't think there's any primary contests anywhere.
Yeah, I don't think so even, but, anyway, next meeting of the board is Tuesday, June 6th at 4:00, the Bicentennial Committee is meeting Tuesday, June 6th at 3:00. We're closed on, uh, Tuesday, May 16th for Primary Election Day and Monday, May 29th for Memorial Day. Our Budget Work Session, um, our second one for 2018 is on June 20th at 4:00 PM. Touch a Truck is this Saturday, please come, it's free, Central Park, from 10 to 1:00. Home Run Derby is Thursday, May 18th at Turk Baseball Field, so you check in at 4:30, it starts off at 5:00 and it goes until 7:00, it's a free event, but you gotta pre-register at DoylestownRec.com. Thompson Performing Arts Series kicks off on May 19th with the, a movie called Moana, and before the start of the movie, there's a Polynesian dance demonstration. The next movie is following Friday, June 2nd, The Secret Life of Pets, again, admission is free and sponsored by the Doylestown Animal Medical Clinic, and all of these movies will be held at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park. Doylestown Township will be holding an e-cycling event through P A R Recycle Works, Saturday, June 3rd from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Doylestown, for Doylestown residents only, and it's here at the Administration Building.
Barb, do you wanna just explain what that is for the ordinance?
Yes. Bring all your recycling here.
Electronic.
Electronic.
Yeah, okay.
E, e recycling.
Two things-
E-recycling?
Yeah. Is there anything you can't bring?
Pay money for TVs and monitors.
Yeah.
That's, extra for TVs and monitors.
And no, no large appliances, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Anything else that I should know about that?
Yeah.
We should know about that, all right.
That's it?
How about-
Yeah, we posted it in some words.
And it can't print.
For those not on Facebook.
Twitter?
If they're not on Facebook, then-
Website?
Website, yes.
Yes, it's on website, and there's some materials over there, there's a whole flyer of materials right over on the, of, or, um, the P A R Recycle Works. Again, Saturday, June 3rd, um, do I take phones?
Phone, yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Any electronics, nothing with free on?